Some folks there to begin with. I am going to, all right, nevermind. Ordinances 50 and 51, we cannot have the final vote on those until July?
Yeah, I think I was right.
Okay, so there's something with the timing of, you know, us approving it.
Or just hold them.
Yeah.
Or just leave on the second reading.
Okay. Yep. To not say anything, or just make a motion to leave it on second read?
Yeah, there's a provision in the Constitution that provides for the submission to the electorate at the next regular election occurring no less than 60 and no more than 120 days after it's passed, so.
Or more than 120 hours.
Right. So you have to wait until July. So that will be, 50 and 51 will be holding.
So are we just moving past them, or are we saying?
Well, Mark says we have to decide, so.
So can I just make a motion to hold it second reading?
You don't automatically do that, so I could say we're just leaving this at second read and waiting to submit it the appropriate time.
Yes, so just say no motion needed, I guess.
Gotcha.
Okay, moving on to 51.
52.
Oh, 52, thank you.
What's your pleasure?
All right, this is the rotary mower. 52, autonomous mower, thank you. All right, I gotta get my head out of the stray gear. So we had the first reading of this, some people are gonna do a little more reading about it and learning about it. Does anyone have any further questions for Mr. Wilson or the mayor about this mower? That being said, I know for myself that mowing season is in full swing, and it would be real nice to have someone else mowing alongside of me autonomously. So I propose that we use second and third reading if there's no further questions on this mower and whether or not we want it. So let's go ahead and do that, Mr. Ventura.
Okay. I've had people ask me about that, and they thought it was pretty neat.
Yeah, you know, it seems quite safe, especially from where we're gonna be using it, and it has lots of safety features, so I say let's give it a try, or at least vote on giving it a try. I'm going to wait to talk about 53, we're gonna throw that in with 58 and 59, so let's move on to 55. This is the appointment of Christine Mesky to the planning commission. She has a very nice background in landscape architecture for many years, so I think she would make a good addition, and to get that going, I'd like to do that one, two, three, if anyone has any issues.
I don't have an issue, but I do have a question. I agree that she's good, but I'm on the HOA board with her, do I have to abstain, or am I okay to?
So the decision whether to abstain is up to you, probably no actual conflict there, unless, you know, there's some kind of business that the HOA is presenting in front of the city.
We typically don't.
Good question. All right, so let's go one, two, three on 55, please.
What are we doing on 53?
We're gonna wait to talk about those along with the final two, 58 and 59.
So we're gonna skip them?
Just in this meeting.
Just briefly, we're gonna come back to it.
Yep. The Teamsters, the service department's collective bargaining agreement, anyone wanna speak to this? Anyone wanna speak to this at all?
We'll negotiate it, so probably it would be something I should talk about.
Yeah, you've probably been on your mind for quite a while.
This is the third of the five that will be completed, hopefully if you guys pass this. Basically, everything is the same as the other ones, it's a four, three, and three. We increased their allowance for the boots and equipment, cost of boots have gone up when we were negotiating, they were able to illustrate that pretty easily, and we all know that the cost of everything's gone up, so we raised it from, I think it was a $2.25 to $4.50. So we also allow them to buy, you know, some other things they can get, like coats or, you know, things like that, they have money left over, so it's all things they're gonna use in the course of their duties. But everything else is the same as everyone else, so there's nothing earth shattering here, it's all the same stuff.
The vacation stuff that got changed, six times that got changed.
The adding of the holiday, I mean, it's all, everything's.
Clarification of bereavement leave, stuff like that.
Yeah, there was talks about bereavement, but that's substantive to this, not really, it's just clarifying.
Any further questions on that? I know this has been hanging over the city's head for a while, so I would like to do one, two, three on this, you know, considering that it's been under negotiation for so long, if that's all right with everyone? All right?
Get it off the plate.
Yep. The City Hall dry fire suppression system, to be frankly, do you wanna talk about that?
Sure. We've been having problems, we're all aware that the system was put in, actually in 1996, one of the first systems, once the wall was up. It's the dry system, so its air holds back the water. Over the years, it has been charged, condensation gets in a pipe and they start to leak from the inside out. We were having more and more alarm drops, we burned up a couple compressors, we finally brought in a company, Silco, and their rep went through and walked the entire attic of the building, which in itself is a chore, there's no catwalk in there, and the pipe, when he came down, he was like, wow, it's really, really bad. We are at risk for catastrophic failure. Dry systems are a little weird, less air pressure holds back the water pressure. Our water here, we have very good, so you're talking about 100 PSIs when we come through that system, and then if it fails, the weight of that, and it moves, Vince can attest to the police department, when that system charges the noises it makes. So the rep was explaining to us that we would have many areas in the city fail, and it would just be water coming out of the ceiling. This price includes hydrogen, just under $7,000 to put hydrogen in instead of air, there's no oxygen, therefore no oxidation, so it increases longevity of the system. The other thing is, if we have a failure like that, even in a fire incident, it's not gonna contain the fire. I was, Assistant Chief and I were at a code conference in Columbus over the winter, they talked about the city of Phoenix, very progressive fire department, this actually caused battalion chief to cancel their job. They have not done a good job inspecting their system, the public library, they had catastrophic failure, the insurance claim was $10 million, and they lost countless books that can't be replaced. So it's something desperately needs to be done before we have that. I say it's gonna fail tomorrow, nope, but we don't know.
I was at the training room today for about an hour, and the room, the compressor room is right next door, and I was shocked, that compressor kicked down twice while I was down there. It's definitely losing pressure fast.
Right. And we have fixed many leaks over the years, in walls, things of that nature.
You said that system is original to this building?
Yes.
How long after we pass this, on passing it tonight, will you be able to get them started?
They have to get supplies in probably four weeks.
And this was already in capital improvement?
Yes.
This was already budgeted for?
Yes.
All right, any further questions about this? All right, I would like to do this one, two, three, so we can begin the waiting game, whether or not, if we do pass it, then we can start waiting to wait, correct?
Yep.
All right, so next we are going to talk about 53, 58, and 59. So if you recall, 53 is establishing a 12-month moratorium for new car wash establishments. 58 is in addition, 12-month moratorium on tire stores and establishments, and mattress companies and establishments. So it'll be, you know, basically the same, but for different types of businesses. Any discussion anyone wants to bring up on this?
Since I brought them forward, I probably should object a little bit of why they're here today. All I'm asking council to do is to open the conversation, I'm asking you to vote whether or not this is what's best for us moving forward, but I wanna ignite the conversation. We all know we're here to represent the people who live in this community, and you all have heard them say that they're tired of mattress shops, tire stores, and car washes, we have too many of them, I hear the complaints all the time, and I'm sure all of you do. So this is my, bring it to your laps for you to talk about. If you're not giving your vote, you're talking about it. We have 12 months to decide whether or not this is something we as a city wanna pursue, or we don't wanna pursue. So I want more input from the community, and my thought would be that we could have a public hearing at some point to get the input from the community as well, because I wanna hear from them, because I keep hearing this. So that's why I'm bringing it to you, I want the conversation to start, it's not a vote in favor of or against, but it's starting the conversation, because, you know, other communities are starting to do this, because they're recognizing the problems. There's a lot of things out there that are cash cows, and car washes are one of them right now, so that's something that, you know, all these bigger entities see that, so they start putting car washes everywhere, because losses to them are nothing. If there's a car wash in Macedonia, well, they'll put one in Twinsburg, no big deal. So let's talk about it, that's what I'm asking you all to do, is just talk.
Yeah, I had asked about the car washes before we approved the one in, because it's like, why? Why do we need another one? And the one that was located at 271, the entrance there, they were going at the original car wash, which is over by Gordon Foods, who's gonna build in the doggy park, and we talked to them and said, that's a bad intersection, yet we allowed one to go in on the other side of the street. Besides car wash, and the other two that are in here, if I hear one more word about why do we have so many fast food restaurants, stop, just stop. And I started counting chicken places, then I started counting, you know, subway sub-shops, and then I started counting pizza places, and this is all in a circle of maybe three miles?
You left one out.
What?
Dentist offices.
Oh, yeah? No, they didn't complain about that.
No, but you have an extraordinary number of dentist offices in the same square miles.
But if I hear one more word when I go out about fast food restaurants, I mean, we put in, and we just approve, and put in the one over where the bank's gonna go next to it, which is another question they're asking, why are we getting another bank? But if you just drive the road, we got a sushi place in Macedonia, we got another Japanese food place in Twinsburg, and if you really want Panda Express, go down to Streetsboro. I mean, they're not far away. The other one I heard about was Walmart, but I hear a lot.
I'll hold my opinion on Walmart.
Yeah, they are just, people.
I went to the planning commission meeting about, before they built the one by key in, and I had two questions I was gonna ask, and I asked the one, and it had to do with the traffic survey, and they told me there was no need for a traffic survey, because they did the traffic survey when Kentucky Fried Chicken was approved. My second question, which I thought better of asking, and I did mention this to the police chief at a later time, that that was an awful place to have coin-operated machines. You have coin-operated machines there with transits living right there, and you have change machines, you have vacuum cleaner machines, you have towel machines, and I don't know, has there been any thefts in those?
They're not open yet, they're still under construction. Oh, the car wash is still under construction.
Yeah, it's still under construction.
So that was my fear at the time, being with my experience in the profession, that that was gonna be a catastrophe just waiting to happen there. You know, at night, cruiser comes through there, they can see him coming through, yes, they're patrolling, there's no doubt in my mind, but they can't be in there, you know, enough where somebody can't break into one of those kind of coin-operated machines.
Well, and I think the biggest thing is the traffic, I thought they'd get out.
Same way they do for Kentucky Fried Chicken and Speedway.
You don't. You sit there and hope.
Good point.
That you can get out, there's not enough lanes there.
So I, I, I agree with that completely.
They took away the entrance to 271 there, because the traffic was so horrible.
Well, remember, guys, these aren't ordinances regarding existing businesses and our problems with having them planned, so.
But I think what we're giving you is examples of things we brought up, saying, we need and read and think about it. So I think both Mr. Ventura and I are like, yeah, we need to moratorium before we can go further.
I agree with Mrs. Tully, I think we need to do the moratorium, continue our research, continue our conversation, and see where it leads with the direction of law director, and, you know, so we don't get carried away in the mayor's, you know, everything that comes through his office, let alone our.
Yeah, really, it's just pausing the ability for a new application for these type of uses to come in, and it gives the city the one-year period, you know, it could be less if you decide, you could possibly extend it. To review the code, talk about recommended changes with the residents if you wanna have public hearings, and then enact any necessary code revisions, is basically the purpose of this.
And I think we need to talk to, it's either Summit or the state that named our intersection the most dangerous in some accounting.
Amen.
And that's where you had an accident. Freeway drive in 82.
Yeah, they were, they were the most dangerous.
And the semis that come through there at 50 miles an hour, okay. So before we add more traffic, I think this is a good way to take a look at what they, and I agree, we need public comment. If any shows.
I think that that's one word.
Yeah, I would hope they would, because instead of calling or grabbing, when you're on the street, saying hey.
At the end of the day, you know, I stand by this as America, and we should have the freedom to do whatever we want with our property, as long as we're within zones. You live in certain places because you want that quality of life, that's something that we establish here. If you don't want that quality of life, you can move out to the country where generally they don't have those kind of things, and you have that option. So we all have that ability to live wherever we want to have these types of things, and I think the people of this community want and expect more for what we're giving them. So a little more regulation, potentially if you guys decide, I think this may be good.
And we're not handcuffed by the idea that you can do anything you want as long as it's within zoning, because who controls the zoning? You know, the legislature does, and then we work on behalf of the people to craft the zoning, so, you know, we don't have, the people don't have to be handcuffed by the zoning, because the zoning exists. We have the opportunity and the ability to change the zoning, so that's what these three items are gonna be a discussion on, is, you know, us crafting this sort of zoning that we want, fine tuning the zoning.
And to just add one more thing to it that advised me on sitting in this room, did also tell me, we need to be proactive instead of reactive.
Yeah.
Okay, right now, we're talking between Mrs. Tully, myself, and everybody else that's had a comment, we're being reactive kinda to the problem we were already having, let's be proactive now and try to eliminate the problem, if we can.
I have a question for Mark. Does any of our existing zoning have prohibitions that are not generalized by business type and actually come out and say something along the lines of a mattress store or a car wash, right? Or is it more generalized?
There's a prohibited uses section of the code, if that's what you're asking, yeah.
But typically, do we call out a specific type of business?
I think dispensaries might be one, we two.
Generally by use, I think like a crushing type of use, that kind of thing.
And my only reason to ask that is, you know, I'm very hesitant to do anything where we create a precedent where we're telling businesses, we've picked and chose what type of business can use property that they own, because we're gonna potentially create this perception that Macedonia is not what's open and welcoming to these three types of businesses. I'm sure everybody in here is gonna potentially agree with me when I say the minute this gets out, the two or three things that we didn't potentially pass tonight, people are gonna say, why didn't you ban those things too, right? And at what point is that gonna end? When are we gonna stop creating this list of moratoriums of things we wanna stop?
Well, the moratorium only gives us a chance to look further into it.
No, I get that, I'm not disagreeing with the motive and the reason, I don't wanna give anybody that impression, but what I meant was tire stores, mattresses, and car washes, right? Somebody's gonna come back on Monday and say, well, what about sub-shops? What about, just like Ms. Tully said, right? So.
That's the number one issue I get all the time, is fast food.
But my point is, is at what point is this gonna end, if what we moratorium, right? That's my concern. I get the intent and the reason for doing it, I understand it's a well-intended purpose, it's just I'm concerned that it's gonna send the wrong message to potential future development in a city, that's all.
There's not much room for.
I agree with that.
Development to be made with.
I agree with that, but as businesses become vacant, we want someone to come in, right? What if there's other potential outbuildings in the commons or in the Judd, right? That's my concern, is that we send the wrong message when our intentions are good, that's all I'm worried about.
I don't think we'd be sending the wrong message, because you're gonna get somebody that is more advantageous to the city, that are gonna be looking at those also, and if we just take.
I would hope that, yeah.
If we just take the first person that, you know, wants to open up a, you know, and I have one person in mind that I can't really nail it down to, but this person has a business, he's moved, in the four years I've been at a certain volunteer organization, he's moved his business at least, at least four times, okay? And all he does is jump around till something happens, and he's gotta get out, and he moves on to something else. We don't want that kind of situation.
I was, I somehow, I don't even know how this happened, I ended up following the mayor of Streetsboro, and recently he commented on some activity in their city, and a bunch of residents complained that they didn't have X, Y, and Z in their city, and that they felt they always had to drive to Macedonia to get it. And I thought that was really telling about the variety that we have. But the reason I'm bringing up the point that I'm concerned about it is, in one of the media stories that's covering this pattern of cities doing what we're considering tonight, some professor at Case Western said, I think cities have to be cautious when they get into decision-making about what kinds of businesses they want in their community. If you get into the business of over-regulating, you may prevent businesses from coming at all.
But if you've already got three or four mattress companies.
I agree with you, I make jokes about it all the time. I make jokes about all the mattress companies, and tire stores, and the sub-shops all the time. I just worry that we're gonna.
Does that include the auto part stores?
Not yet.
Because.
He makes a good point, I mean, where we stop.
Right.
I think, I think, my thinking is like, when it comes to the mattresses and tire shops, we have a lot. And what this could lead to is, we could say, in a one or two square mile area, we don't want more than one store.
Right.
Which means a little.
Yeah, we're not, because obviously, the ones that are here, we're not gonna make them go out of business.
We can't, we can't get away with it.
If this doesn't apply, yeah, this only applies to future applications after the ordinance goes into effect. And I think really, to your point, Jeff, is the point the mayor made earlier, this isn't enacting regulations. This is a pause essentially to allow you to consider potential regulations that you may or may not want to enact, right?
Yeah, we might, you know, have further discussion on it, and say like, you know, it's really weird that we're thinking about car washes or something like that.
Right.
Not, it might open up that we want to actually expand the list, but it'll just be the beginning.
And make it more a saturation ordinance as opposed to a specific business that you want it to.
And keep in mind, we have some of the Summit books already, you gotta reference that, I mean, the dispensaries are a good example.
Yep.
We don't allow for pornographic stores, and we don't allow for gentlemen's clubs, you know, I think you should call it a gentleman's club, but you get what I'm getting at.
Oh, we zone, they have a house for you or even.
And then car sales, I mean, it's.
We zone one little area, and they never came.
So it's.
It was long ago.
This is all part of the conversation that I wanted to open up.
I appreciate it.
I'm asking you guys to talk more about it.
Yep.
Because is it good for us, or is it good for, I mean, that's something, we're all intelligent people, we should discuss.
And maybe we solicit opinions like we did with the firefighters.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely, and I think that's what Ms. Brand brought up, and Ms. Tully, you know, confirmed, yes, we need that input, you know, have the public hearings, bring it in when somebody talks to you about it, you know, make a note, on this date, I talked to a resident that said this, or asked about that.
But we also need to make sure we have good public education about the topic too, because anyone's gonna say right off the bat, absolutely, and sub-shops and the, and we need to make sure that counterpoints or what we could do wrong when crafting this also are understood by the residents, because, yeah, I thought we were up to there, because the residents would also say, don't allow sub-shops, but also have a lot of salad shops, as if we have the ability to bring in these salad shops, which we don't, so we can't legislate that.
More sub-shops.
Yeah.
So what I'm suggesting is, I'm asking to start the conversation, we talk first, then we all come to a consensus, then we go to the public.
So it gives us a year to talk about it, and then nobody can slip in in that year while they know that we're talking about it.
We wanna take the new one.
Well, Mark, do you have something to add?
And make it the first.
I was just gonna say.
And set the public hearing?
Yeah, you could, well, you could decide that tonight or at a later time, but the point I was gonna make, part of this commitment really, if you do the moratorium, is saying, we are gonna have planning professionals look at this and make recommendations, probably at some point after you have public hearings and get input.
But I think once, once we put it on the table, that's when I started getting the phone calls, and went out, he got the visitation, we need to set, well, there, summer's probably a bad time, but we need to set a public hearing, maybe have two of them.
Well, remember, this is also an election year.
Some people.
This is also an election year for three people at the table.
Two. Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking.
We're not, don't call him, leave him out.
So, so absolutely have a discussion before the election and after the election, just so, you know, whoever, whoever might be part of the discussion after the beginning of the year is actually part of that discussion, you know what I mean?
Correct.
If somebody wanna make this, that if we go forward with it, it'd be effective January 1st?
No, this would be, this would be.
These are immediate.
These would be immediately, so it would be 12 months from now, yes.
Yeah, they're emergencies, so they're.
Yeah, 12 months from now, so that gives us a year, and that definitely takes us past the election and everything like that, so, but having two meetings, or having discussions about it, going, and not ending the discussion before the end of the year, I would appreciate that we follow the schedule like that, so that, you know, everyone that will be stakeholders in this, starting in 2024, will be able to have a voice on that. So that being said, let us please, if you guys all agree, do second and third reading on 53, if that's all right with everyone?
Just one question, since we're laser-focused on types of businesses, do we open ourselves to any lawsuits? So moratoriums are something that have been legally recognized as valid by the Iowa Supreme Court and by the US Supreme Court. US Supreme Court has authorized them, I think they've at least said they're not per se unlawful up to 32 months even, 12 months is presumed lawful, and again, it's not regulating, which is pausing the time, but consider changing the code essentially.
So a moratorium is a legally authorized action for council to take?
That's a great question that I asked him prior to bringing it to us, because obviously that's something that was on my mind as well.
Yeah, I mean, just seeing that at first glance, I would want to immediately.
Doesn't mean somebody won't try.
Sure. It's just something you'd have to deal with, though.
Right.
And so on the other two?
That being said, I'd like to do one, two, three.
And adopt on the other one.
Yeah, if that's okay with everyone?
Amen.
All right. And then, do you wanna make the comments about the public hearing? As the president of council.
Yeah, I'll just mention that.
We're gonna set up.
That at some point, you know, either, I think after the summer, after the summer break, maybe we'll have a.
Yeah, my fear of the summer break, we don't get very many people as it is, well.
Maybe sometime in September or October. Okay? All right, folks, that should be it.
It's time.
And it's 7:30, let's move on.
We just had...
11th council meeting, it is 7:31 PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brand?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Now, I ask American Legion Chaplain Tom O'Brien to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
With bowed heads, let us pray. Almighty Father, as we begin this meeting, let us remember those who have come before us, who have contributed to the growth and development of our city, and who have laid the foundation upon which we build today. We honor their legacy by carrying forward their vision of a thriving, vibrant, and inclusive community. May we be guided by their wisdom and inspired by their example as we work to shape the future of our great city. We ask you, Almighty God, to watch over our police and fire personnel, for they are our first responders in crises that may arise at any time, day or night. Please keep them safe, so at the end of their workday, they can return unharmed to their homes and loved ones. In closing, oh God, our mercy, we ask for thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors, who may be suffering from mental or physical disabilities. Cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen.
Amen.
And now, please, with hand over your heart, join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
You're American.
So recognizing today our Nordonia basketball team, I can tell you guys, it's a lot of your games, the Stowe game, but it may have been one of the best games I've ever watched and I saw that. And I am a huge fan of basketball, let me tell you. That was amazing. Appreciate it. And I'm sure next to someone's father, who also agreed. A little certificate of recognition to that. It reads, whereas, the knowledge that active participation organized athletics is influential to build a good character and teaches a closer sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth. And whereas, in order to excel in any one sport, a young person must demonstrate an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. Whereas, a vivid example of this has been brought to our attention by the achievements of the Nordonia Knights' boys' basketball team, who reached a district finals for the first time in 10 years. Congratulations on that. Led by seniors Landon Naylor, Liam Gopala Krishna, I was quizzing on that, I don't know how to say your name. Mitchell Waitecki, Isaac Cherry, Joey Boinkus, Patrick Williams Jr., Kari Alameen, and Gate Ingram had a phenomenal season at 19 and 6. Whereas, the season, the suburban league named senior Landon Naylor to the first team All-Conference Honors, while Liam Gopala Krishna and Mitchell Waitecki were second team All-Conference recipients. And last but not least, Isaac Cherry was awarded honorable mention All-Suburban League. Whereas, not only do these young men take care of business on the court, but in the classroom as well, as seven of our eight seniors received All-Conference Scholar Awards, and as a team compiled a 3.52 grade point average. We, as a staff, are proud of our student athletes and cannot wait to see them thrive for other future endeavors. Now therefore, I implore, May 11, 2023, to be Nordonia Knights' Boys' Basketball Day in our city, and extend my personal congratulations to those of all our citizens who appreciate the team's athletic prowess and wish them success in future competitions. Do you know some of you moving on, and I think all your gentlemen are going to college , so do you want to...
Yes, um, you know, we have a couple guys that are going to college. Mitchell Waitecki is going to play at Hiram University. Liam's decided where he's gonna go play, um, Landon Corrigan, and then he's attending Cincinnati as well, Joey, and Asher is gonna go to Alabama State, right? Alabama A.M., Alabama A.M. And, you know, again, just a common group, you know, they, we knew as freshmen coming in that they were special. Um, you know, they didn't miss open gyms in the summer. You know, we got two, three sport athletes, you know, and they took care of business in the classroom. It made it easy for us. I think they kind of demonstrated to the younger guys, you know, what the, what the expectations are. I tell you what, you know, we started open gym two weeks ago, and we had 70 kids there, including high school and middle school. I think that just shows a testament of the seed that they produce, and, you know, guys are excited for, for, for the future of the Nordonia basketball.
The girls had two people play. My daughter had one of them. Good job, you're doing something right. But thank you. Congratulations. I wish you guys a long future.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, guys.
If you didn't know, I'm a little fan of basketball, just a little.
Really?
And I gotta say, I said it earlier, but the Stowe game with them, and they went into triple overtime. I mean, that game was absolutely amazing. I was on the edge of my seat the whole time. Mr. Wilson, I think you were there too, weren't you?
I was standing next to him.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't paying attention to you. I was paying attention to the game. So, I mean, that was probably the most exciting basketball game I've ever seen in my life. And I've been to a lot, so that was awesome. Don't get me talking, start talking about basketball.
Too late.
You talk basketball, I'll talk soccer.
Oh, I love all sports. Don't get it twisted, but basketball's high on my list. Uh, we have two other proclamations today, and I'm gonna have my helper over here with one of them. If you could read the one, and I'll do the final one.
Certainly. This is for proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. There's awareness, people across the United States experience mental health conditions that impact their individual health and well-being, as well as their relationship with the community. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic affected interpersonal relationships by eliminating access to offices, schools, stores, stadiums, theaters, and museums, and limited access to mental health services through a lack of in-person services, and increasing or intensifying mental illness and distress, thereby deteriorating the well-being of people across the country, including in Summit County. And whereas, the silver lining of the pandemic is a heightened awareness and understanding of mental health, mental illness or distress, and mental well-being, and its connection to physical and overall health. And whereas, Mental Health Awareness Month, observed since 1949, has served as a vehicle for awareness, education, and advocacy around mental health, and provides an opportunity for residents to highlight the difficulties of the past years. And whereas, Summit County residents experiencing a mental health crisis should always seek emergency help at 911 or 1-800-273-8255. And whereas, supporting and educating the community on mental health and wellness is crucial to preventing crises and fostering a healthy, thriving community. Now therefore, Nicholas Mayor, Mayor Nicholas Molnar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, do hereby encourage prompt and widespread dialogue about mental health during the month of May, and declaring May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you. Mr. Hoover? And last but not least, this is an important one, and we always want to recognize the, the people that work for our, our community, but more so today or this week is for National Police Week. So it reads, whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. Whereas, the members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Macedonia play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the City of Macedonia. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of law enforcement, of the law enforcement agency of the City of Macedonia unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas, we will observe the week of May 15th through the 21st as National Police Week. Now therefore, I, Nicholas Molnar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, call upon our citizens of the City of Macedonia to observe May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Okay. With that, do we have a approval of the minutes?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, April 27, 2023, regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any public comments? From the massive crowd today? None? Okay. Vinnie, council? Okay, we'll move into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number 50.
Mayor, we'd like to leave ordinance number 50 at second reading, please.
Uh, ordinance number 50, if...
50 and 51, we're just going to be leaving it. We don't need a motion.
Right. We do need a motion?
No.
That's what I said. I'm sorry.
So we will hold over 50 and 51 at second reading. We'll move right into ordinance number 52.
Yes, I'd like to offer ordinance number 52, 2023, for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing participation in the Houston-Goveston area council cooperative purchasing program, and further authorizing the purchase of a new AMR-60 automated rotary mower from M-Tech for use by the service department.
Director Wilson, anything you want to add to that? I know we kind of touched on this in the last meeting, but essentially, it's an autonomous mower that, we played the video, I think we put it up online. Anything you want to add to that?
I don't, I don't really have anything to add. I did talk to the salesman this week. Just mentioned that, you know, there were concerns about safety, and he just reassured me over and over that it was safe, and it's been tested thoroughly and that kind of thing. So that's really all I have.
And again, we're bringing this forward. Like everyone, we're having trouble getting people to do work for the city. This is an autonomous mower that can go out and cut the grass for us. It's gonna do nothing but help us. So essentially, it's a test, and we'll, if it passes, we'll see how it goes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I offer ordinance number 52, 2023, and move it to, to adopt it and post according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance number 52 carries. Ordinance number 53.
I'd like to offer ordinance 53, 2023, for its first reading by title only, please.
It's gonna be second and third reading by title only.
I thought we were only doing one.
No. We were gonna...
We're going all the way through this?
We already had a first reading.
We already had a first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we wanted to do second.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Go. I look at my thing. For the second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
An emergency ordinance establishing a moratorium for a period of 12 months on applications for and the granting of permits or other authorizations relating to car wash establishments within the City of Macedonia.
So again, this was brought forward for council to open the conversation, as I alluded to last week, and I'll continue to allude to, what we're trying to do is, we hear people saying this all the time, and there's two other ordinances just like this, that we want to open the conversation. If we don't open the conversation, then I feel like we're not listening to the people that live in our community. That's essentially what we're trying to do, is we hear you, we want to open the conversation up, and that's what this would do. So it's not gonna, all it's gonna do is pause it for this time, for car washes in Macedonia. I think we're up to four or five at this point. We're only 10 square miles, so that was what opened the conversation up. So I'm asking council to have the talk. That's what I'm shooting for here. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I just want to point out, I had made a lot of comments in the work session about this and the other two ordinances along the same line, and I just want to point out before we vote that the reason that I'm going to end up supporting this is because it's temporary and that we're gonna continue to discuss it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to start the conversation, and I'm glad that Mr. Garvis is, is willing to be a part of the conversation, and as well as Mr. Finley. And we're all, you know, we had a good conversation just to start it off tonight, so we will have more conversations about this. We also have agreed that we'll have at least two public comment sessions before and after the election on, on these issues. So we will be asking for more public input on this to help us get through this discussion. And once again, these ordinances, this one and the 58 and 59 tonight, is just to open a discussion. And while we're having that discussion, hold on any, any incoming businesses of these types. So this is not the be-all, end-all of it. This is just the, a vote to begin the discussion.
Hearing that being said, Mr. Mayor, I have said we pass and post according to law ordinance number 53, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance 53 carries. Resolution number 55.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 55, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution confirming the appointment of Christine Mesky to the City of Macedonia Planning, Planning Commission.
A pretty simple one. We had an opening on the Planning Commission. There were several people that expressed interest in it. Ms. Mesky has a background in landscape architecture, which if you've ever been to a Planning Commission meeting, you know that we talk about that fairly extensively, and I think this would be an amazing fit for that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution 55, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 55 carries. Ordinance number 56.
Mayor, I'd like to present ordinance 56, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Macedonia and the Teamsters Local 436 for the years 2023, 2024, and 2025.
So this will potentially be the third contract that we were able to wrap up, and mirrors the other contracts in terms of what the raises that we were giving out. Long, long, hard process to get here. Director Wilson can attest to that as well. But I'm happy that we finally came to a resolution together to, to do something that's good for the employees and what we feel is good for the city. So that's why we're presenting it to you today, and I hope that you will give this good consideration. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance number 56, 2023, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 56 carries. Thank you, council, and I know the service department will be appreciative as well.
Thank you, Troy Hardwell, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Mr. Gooding.
And Mr. Wilson.
And Mr. Wilson, thank you, guys.
This is the self-control. Self-control is empowered itself for us. You know the mower we passed?
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't need, they don't need a contract, a union. Congress mayor or more?
Yeah. The robot. What is that, A1? Is that what they always call that?
Artificial intelligence. A1, AI.
Oh, yeah.
We need to see a demonstration of it.
We, we'll make sure that we...
If it ever shows up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
Knowing how the supply chain is.
All right. Ordinance number 57.
I move to offer ordinance number 57, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Silco Fire and Security for the replacement of the City Hall Dry Fire Suppression System.
Chiefs, more so Chief Ripley, but chiefs?
Thank you, Mayor. This has replaced the dry fire suppression system located in all of the attic space in our entire building. It's, uh, was installed when the building was built, one of the first systems that went in when the building became under roof in 1996, late 1996. It's been charged a few times due to other leaks that occurred in the system. That moisture sits in those pipes, oxygen, oxidation, rusts, and we are at risk of a catastrophic failure. We had the whole system inspected by a tech that went through all of those spaces and was amazed that we had not blown a pipe. And when one of them goes, it's all gonna go because of the stress that's gonna put on the system. Yes, we are assured to cover that with the operational...
Asterrophe. It's overdue. Way overdue.
And what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number 57, 2023, and post the same according to law. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 57 carries. Thank you, council, the safety of everyone that works within this building. So not to be redundant, but this is essentially what I talked about earlier with having tire shops, pauses it for 12 months. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 58, 2023, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance 58 carries. Ordinance number 59.
Yes, Mayor, I offer ordinance number 59, 2023, for its first, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
An emergency ordinance establishing a moratorium for a period of 12 months on applications for and the granting of permits or other authorizations relating to mattress companies and establishments within the City of Macedonia.
Again, this one's just for mat- mattress shops, and a moratorium for 12 months. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 59, 2023, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance number 59 carries. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? All right. Hearing none, we'll move right into the mayor's report. I was finding that sheet. I think, I think I mentioned this in the last council meeting, but I'll, I'm saying it again, it doesn't really hurt us. But the mayor's court report, March 2023 revenue was $48,936. April 2023 was $29,846.71. Just a gentle reminder to everyone that lives in... Just a gentle reminder to everyone that lives in town, when you cut your grass, do not blow the clippings into the street, a number of different things that that will cause problems for. More, most importantly, people that ride motorcycles will tell you, when you hit grass on a motorcycle, it's like riding on ice, and subsequently, if someone on a motorcycle hits that grass and it's in front of your home, you will be liable for that, so you definitely don't want to blow your grass into the street. I know that when I do it, I have a riding mower, and I blow it out, whatever goes out there, I blow back in, and you would never even know it, but you cannot do that, it also clogs up our stormwater system, we definitely don't want that to happen either, so any grass clippings have to stay within your yard. If you have excessive grass clippings, you can bag those and throw them out in your trash, they will take them, it's not going to be an issue for you, or you can have a mulching mower, which, you know, minces them up to the point where it's not going to be an issue for anybody, so you cannot leave those on the driveway, or, I'm sorry, not the driveway, the sidewalk or the road. So I wanted to put that out there, make sure they knew that. Our, excuse me, our building commissioner does have to have conversations with people at times, and you can't be cited for that, we don't want to do that, that's why I'm giving the ample talk now, just to say, hey, you know, we really shouldn't be doing that.
Thank you. There's been numerous feelings on my street about, when you're told not to put your leaves every year, why? Because it goes in the sewer, it goes in the water, same thing with your grass clippings, and it's amazing, everyone forgot about that.
Not to go off on a tangent, but we did have an individual that lit the leaves on fire in the road one year, and that was not a good idea either, so probably not want to do that.
It's a good idea.
It's not a good idea. Interviews are underway for the communication specialist, we completed that this week, I had President Brant with me, she has the background in that realm, we've narrowed it down, we should have more information likely next week as to where we're going to move forward with that or not, so more to come on that, and thank you for giving your time to help with that. I also want to thank council for passing the service contract, and I want to thank the Service Department and all the time they spent working with the administration to get that completed, I'm happy to have that done and moving that forward. Something kind of big has happened over the past couple of weeks, anyone that lives in this area knows that the Key Inn has had its fair share of issues. Today, I believe, Mark, we filed suit with them, right now, that building's not inhabitable, and no one is inhabiting that building. It's, as the safety director of the community, I can't in good conscience allow people to do that, but there's also a legal force that I have to follow, which, everything I do flows through the Law Department, and we get with the Police Department, we kind of take things from there, and the Building Department, so I can tell you, we've had countless, countless hours with the police chief, the building commissioner, and the Law Department talking about what we need to do to rectify that problem. Another thing where, here, I'm listening to you, I hear you, we're doing things about it, we're going to get that taken care of, so there's more to come on that, I can't legally say a whole lot more. Mark, is there anything that you would like to add to that?
No, I mean, I'll just really summarize, it's completely viable, but according to common police for some accounting, it's the exposed preliminary and permanent injunction to relieve, and basically, the point of that is so people don't enter the hotel with all of the safety violations that currently exist, we're trying to protect the public and anybody who may enter that property, long story short.
And thank you, Director Gudde, but not getting into specifics, it's not safe to inhabit that building at all, anywhere, so that's why we're doing what we're doing. It takes a long time to get there, believe me, this has been on the docket for me for about five years, and we're finally at the point of rectifying the problem.
On behalf of the residents, it's been heard since longer than that, they appreciate the fact that we're moving forward.
More to come. And last but not least, don't drive distracted, put the phones down, drive the car, especially you young people, there's no reason to check that text message, there's no phone call that's that important, drive your car, get home, pull over if you need to use the phone, please keep yourself and your family safe, and get home safely, it's not worth it.
Can you have the chief during his talk one more about how the law has changed on that?
Yeah, I believe. Did you touch on that last week?
Yeah, we talked about it last week.
Talk about last?
Our last two weeks ago, I'm sorry.
And it's not going to, it's going to change permanently in the middle of June, or?
Six months.
October.
Oh, not till October?
Well, before the snow comes.
The enforcement will change then, the law won't change, but how we're enforcing it.
Okay.
So essentially, it's, now you get a gentle smack on the hand, in six months, it's a lot more than that, I think you have to take a class, it's a hefty fine if you're caught using your phone or driving with your phone in your hand or driving distracted, so it's a lot beefier, so trust me, I'll be talking about this a lot, don't worry.
Well, I figured you got the state to get involved, since you've talked about it every time.
Maybe they heard me, I don't know, I'm not going to take credit for that.
You can break a little watch.
Kind of a thing, I don't know.
Mr. Gooddity, isn't it progressive, the penalty for multiple violations of that?
I believe it is, and I think the big thing, it goes from secondary offense to primary offense, meaning you can't get pulled over just for that interaction alone, there doesn't have to be speeding or something like that to get a psych for it.
But the fines and costs and everything else?
They're exponential, I've heard, yeah, your second within a year, potentially pays by your bail amount essentially.
Thank you. Community reports.
Parks and Rec Commission has its May meeting next Wednesday, the seventeenth, at six o'clock in, at the rec center.
The annual cemetery meeting, which includes all the communities that fund it, will be here in, right before our council meeting, before the next meeting at seven fifteen. We have copies of next year's budget, there's no big change in it, which is good news, and there are a lot of projects that were completed, that is also good news, so if you're interested in the cemetery, come on up.
Thank you. Department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I do want to say thank you to council for passing the contract. As Mayor mentioned, I feel like it really has been a long time, just trying to remember when it started, but I can't, so yeah, it's, but I'm glad, I'm glad we got it complete. May twentieth, Garden Club Flowers, we have our building over here called Garage Two on Alphie, that's more of a park restroom, I haven't talked about that in a while, I kind of gave it a break, but I'm not.
I don't want to touch it. I don't want to touch it.
IT system, no touch.
Okay.
It is, for all intents and purposes, it is complete, and Memorial Day is like the, I know they have a, some sort of ceremony happening there, so, you know, we're excited to say it will be open, we have some door entrances, a few things, sidewalks are complete, and we're going to do some final paving, repaving of some of the road that was tore up in construction and that sort of thing, but we have decided about that. Bucket truck that we ordered a while back, we will be getting in middle of June, somewhere in there, so it's good news, spoke with the salesman this week, and rain barrels coming up May twenty-second, the rain barrel event for residents, that is, end of report.
And if they want to register that, that's on the website, correct?
Yeah.
I have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead. I know we talked earlier this week, have you heard any update, or do you have even like a rough idea of when we're going to do the mulch?
Yes, he came out, well, they assessed it today, actually.
Okay. I don't remember when we normally do it, is it late May, early June?
Well, I was sort of under the impression that we did it later, because we did it later last year, last year, we struggled to find contractors who would do it.
Right.
Everyone was kind of, I don't know if we were just coming out of COVID or what, but everyone was kind of giving us the cold shoulder, couldn't find one to do it last year, so we ended up doing it kind of late, I think we're a little bit behind the eight ball now, even though, you know, it seems like we're not having the issues we talked to or until that, but you're in there.
Okay. I just know people are starting to ask.
Yeah.
That's why I came to you, actually.
They don't, they don't seem to have a big way, so I think, I don't want to promise anything.
I don't want to, I don't want to ask you to.
Hopefully by the beginning of June?
Yeah, I don't want to promise anything, but yeah, he knows.
I think people, people want to plan a little bit.
They know we want it soon, we want it, so yeah, they're going to bump us up.
Okay. Thank you.
And are we doing the hanging baskets this year that were so popular last year?
Yes, we are, absolutely.
Now that you're done piling this bathroom?
Absolutely, typically, you know, flowers, a lot of people say Mother's Day, even Mother's Day is a Memorial Day, we don't want to put them out too early, I mean, those were a long time ago, it's all over, it's happening.
People loved that last year, so it'll be great if it happens again, thank you.
Director Gelati.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Emergency services driveway project is now complete, turned out great, thank you to police and fire for their patience throughout the project. Only other item to let council know about, next week, ODOT is scheduled to do some pavement maintenance work on State Route Eight, up at the north end of town by the Valley View intersection, they'll be placing a sealant on the pavement to extend the life of the road. Just want to let the council know, when it first goes down, sometimes it's rough to drive on, it feels rough, so if you do drive on it, don't be alarmed, it does smooth out over a little bit of time, same material they've used on the rest of State Route Eight in years past, so we don't foresee any issues. End of report.
But the key to that, that's an ODOT project, that's not a Macedonia project.
Correct.
Just to be crystal clear, so if there's questions about it, ODOT's the people you want to call.
That's correct.
Thanks.
When does residential paving start this year? Do you have a schedule yet?
Early June.
Early June, thank you.
Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. We're really busy right now in the course of spring activities, and believe it or not, spring activities are already winding down, so we can start summer activities, so it's just kind of relentless, one thing to another, for the Parks and Rec Department, so we're excited about that. You've been working diligently for the last two weeks on our NRPA Gold Medal video that we will be submitting on May twenty-fifth, thanks to Community Focus for partnering with us on that, I know a couple of you have been involved in some interviews for us, it's been really neat to get some of the resident feedback and be able to also get some of the guests of our facility to highlight their experience, why they come to the rec, and what it's meant for them, for their health and wellness, so it's been really neat to hear those stories, and right now, we're just getting into the production piece of it, after all the interviews have been completed, and then we'll certainly share that video with you guys once it is done. Community garage sale is this weekend, and we encourage everybody to go out to all the different homes, see what they have available, and see what kind of great deals you can work out, you can find the map, will be on our website, map that'll list where all the locations are. We are currently working towards next weekend, Family Fishing Day, which will be May twentieth, we'll have a lot going on at the lake and also in the park with activities, so please make sure you arrive early, so you can get parking and get to your location and get set up for the fishing event, and then the one big thing to kind of talk to you guys about now is upcoming June ninth and tenth will be Summer Fest, hosted over at the Mac Rec, we have a lot of activities going on for this event, there'll be a similar festival that we're used to with carnival rides, games, food, and then five K on Saturday morning, so we encourage everybody to start getting their plans together for June ninth and tenth, and we'll certainly conclude on the tenth with fireworks at nine forty-five. That concludes my report.
Really looking forward to the Spirit of Macedonia Summer Fest.
Summer Fest, the Spirit of Macedonia, yes.
Yeah, that Spirit of Macedonia is going to be a good time, thanks. Director Barris.
Thank you, Mayor. July seventeenth is the due date for the Macedonia income tax refund, you can, you can call our office, I've talked to a number of residents and walked them through the form, the resident can come in, I'll sit down with them, or they can just stop by like the mayor did and drop off his W-two's and say, fill this out for me.
What's your phone number there, sir?
Our phone number.
Five, five, five.
Five, five, five. Three, three, oh, four, six, eight, eighty-three, fifty.
Thank you. And then, for reference to you, Mr. Chaddick, what's the website they can go check for you?
W-W-W dot Macrec dot com.
Thank you.
And America.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may have noticed, we have another crew out, painting hydrants, unfortunately, I will tell you, we will not get all the hydrants painted this year, we are doing them by hand, scraping them first, so it's kind of a tedious task. We are partnering with North Hills Water District, which we also do for hydrant flushing. The hydrant flushers have completed Macedonia and are moving on, so they're almost halfway done already. The guys are doing a great job, it's three retired individuals from the city of Cleveland Water Department, and they're doing a very good job, and we're very happy with their performance. Station three, the new building in Northfield Center, we finally got our electrical panel, we are slated to move in the first week of June. There will be an open house, we don't have a date yet, you guys are all welcome to attend, it's a nice building, it's going to be very functional for us, and the guys are very much looking forward, and girls are looking forward to moving in there. And once again, the squads are on schedule, they assure us for delivery the week of June twenty-sixth. Those are ones we ordered like two years ago? Yeah. End of report.
There's a new person in charge in Northfield Center that's an old friend of ours, can you mention that?
I did not. Retired Fire Chief Tim Black was recently promoted to Director of Township Services. He was serving as their service director, they have combined the service director position